Work with and Jerry.
We are recording whenever you're ready.
This is trash.
We're ready whenever you are ready.
Microphone plugged in.
Microphone plugged in, you are good to go.
Okay, please join the fight of the legion. I play the legion. United States of America. How come everybody? Glad to see everybody smiling face. Make a motion to approve. The work session minutes dated October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Moved in second, it all favor. And I make a motion to approve this lot minutes of October thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Moved in second and all favor. Make a motion to approve the manifest dated November sixteenth and the amount of three hundred eleven thousand seventy two dollars and two cents.
Seconds.
Moved in second at all favor. Two hundred and eighteen thousand of that is a school. And. In the mail folder, we had a. Letter from the state telling us that we're gonna receive twenty three thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and forty cents and a. Community block grant, highway block grant. So. Twenty three thousand eight thirteen forty. And we will be having, and with the way that we read it, it sounds like we're also gonna get a bridge. Uh, grant to find me a. Yeah, they they check for bridges, bridge aid too, so. Remember last year, we waited till. What was it, Dave? It's supposed to get come out in August and we got it in December. The check for the.
Late December.
Yeah, so.
We had an applied condition.
But anyway, so hopefully I'll come in soon, we'll have a public hearing, uh, maybe we can just schedule that two weeks. Or have the public hearing, say five o'clock in two weeks. At a regular meeting. And if we, if we don't receive the other one, but when we do get the other one, we'll. If it's over ten grams. There's only five million dollars to divvy up there, there was ten million in the highway grants. That was about it, man. You're gonna do, you're playing Joe tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you, you can go. Yeah.
All right, so stats for October, this topic up front here, if anybody would like them, um, they were up a little bit. For October. Public service were two hundred and ninety seven. We had eight arrests, sixty seven motor vehicle stops. Three motor vehicle accidents and the K nine was deployed out five times.
You're a wrestle way.
Yeah, October was a busy month. One, I can speak of, we, it was a, we got three arrests out of one car stop resulting in the. House on Culver Hill Road. Uh, that resulted in a pretty substantial drug seizure. And three arrests.
Those are the good ones, get rid of them.
Yeah, we, we. That was a big one for October. So, but it was a busy month all around, for sure. Any questions?
Did the canine deployments, did she, uh? Did grab any drugs on load?
She assisted in the one on Culver Hill Road and. Uh, I think three of the other ones were assists or traps and then one was a building search.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then. Press the tracks. People were found who even got there, but I can speak to last week, she was deployed out twice in one day, one for a drug, successful drug crime. And the other one, she actually had her first successful track resulting in the arrest of a. Subject to blood house from a violation of restraining order. So those were both within forty minutes of one and hour. She's doing awesome.
I just have a question, when, uh, I know it's different from down home, when, uh. When the fire department is called out on a lot, do you guys automatically send a coward? Do you wait if you're gonna get called?
If we're out and nothing's going on, we usually go, yes, we assist them and anything, especially, you know, depend like that. And a buck at night, there's not a lot of responders, you might get the fire chief and one other guy, we do what we can to help and. Usually with the first time seat of medical post.
Good, okay.
We make it a pretty good practice as long as there's not a call going, we're, we're on our way. Yes.
Think people should know that.
I'm curious. Have you ever looked at the difference between before we even moved to nine? What we did or didn't catch compared to what? Has happened since we have that K nine, so people can see.
I haven't, but I can gladly do that, but what I can say is.
I just think if they know that, wow, this is what's happened.
Right. And I can, I can definitely put something together. You're not comparing apples to apples.
Because if you, they didn't get them, you wouldn't have known.
It's, it's not to. Speak despairingly of anybody, but it's a much more active police department we have now. Even without to, if, if he didn't have that K nine, the numbers are up. You know what I mean?
That's what I know you're saying that, but is there isn't any way of comparing?
You can compare, but you also have to look at what they had to extend to what we got today.
Or did we have that?
Oh, yeah.
And we're just.
Well, we did, that's why.
Well, yeah, the things that, the things that would be actual would be the seizures of the cars. Would be the, uh, the tracking.
Right.
Right, what I can go through her actual.
Yeah, they had to. The, uh, the canine is, her nose is a tool, so we need probable cause to ask for consent to search a car. Her nose can make that probable cause because she's trained in the odor narcotics and if she alerts. That gives us the probable cause that we may not have, all I need to run her on the car is reasonable suspicion that there may be illegal drugs inside the car. So I don't need permission from somebody to put her on that car. And if I put, if they're like, you know what, no, I don't have anything, I put her on the car and she alerts. That gives us the probable cause, either ask for consent or grounds to seize the car and apply for a search warrant.
Whereas before, when you could have stopped them and you wouldn't have known because.
Right, I could, I could, I could have a feeling that there may be something illegal in there, I could ask them, they could tell me to pound sand and I don't have any more grounds.
Right, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That kind of comparison and.
She, she is that tool that gets us to that next step, her nose is like, she's trained on it and if she tells me, yep, there's something in there. I can write that in my affidavit for my search warrant and the judge. Most of the time granted based on her alert because that's what she's trained to do. Is to find that odor and tell me that it's there.
And my statement was purely that we have a much, even if she, if Jesse wasn't here, we have a much more active. Involved police department than what we've. What we previously did, you know what I'm trying to say?
But it wouldn't have made a difference if they didn't know that drugs were in the car.
You don't know what I'm saying.
You know, you're saying that there's more activity going on than back then.
I'm not saying that there's more crime, I'm saying that they are doing more policing.
On, yeah.
Lot more active department than it was in the past.
I know, I'm trying to convince you, not you.
There's certain things we can, can't say, we don't wanna get ourselves in trouble.
But now, yeah, her, she's a great tool and you know, that's, it gets us to that next step because a lot of times, you know, we have a feeling. You know, we know there's something going on, but we don't have grounds enough to go that extra step, but she can, based on case law. And that's, that's why she's such a great asset and I love having her. Cause drug interdiction is one of my favorite things to do. And it always has been.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you guys, I mean.
Got, got a question. You need a new router in the police department?
I know we were looking at one.
Yeah.
And.
We got an estimate.
We do.
Yeah, um, you just, you never got it, you would just wanted to get an estimate on it.
I believe so, yeah, I, I know that when Brandon was here last, he was, he was saying that it's really outdated and we needed to replace it.
Yes.
Is that the land art, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's. That's his, I don't, I don't know about that, it's not my expertise. Yeah, he looked at that and he looked at me, he goes, we need a new one, I said, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, cause we got the estimate to, uh, for a new. Uh, three, uh. Router firewall. The installation, we get to that up with the county? And base it with the county?
Yes, yeah, cause we, we have a remote connection through the county, which is extra safety measures. Of the firewalls there.
So with the router and three hours working with the county. Fourteen hundred and fifteen dollars. Okay.
Cause we had to integrate, we have to, you bring in as well as John Riches, the IT to the county to get us on to their system, so those two had to. Have a conversation to figure out what works best for us.
Yeah, okay. We'll go ahead and do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You want me to message Rebecca to come in for her report?
If she's not with somebody.
They would keep asking questions, now she'd add into it. Oh wait, no she. I don't almost get two copies of the same thing.
You didn't get that?
I do, but I get two.
Raymond on the front though.
One free drive.
Yeah.
And have to be driving home.
He's on her way.
One seventy five wheel.
Yes, yeah. Pass, uh, I watch road, uh.
Is that beef, yeah, that's where they were gonna, that's where they get to permit for the barn and stuff there last year. How do they get a? That, yeah, they get a file for a driveway permit on a class six road. Still a town road. Which leads me to the. Why we have a policy that said. This is the same as last month.
Yes.
Already reviewed it. Yeah, we already, we already reviewed this because. One name sticks out quite boldly and that's the same last name mine and we already reviewed that and. Maybe there's just additional stuff, we have to explain it, hello?
Yeah.
Nick Chris, Bob, she had.
We're just saying that we've seen this report before. These are all new ones you put in.
Um, the permits are all new, yeah.
Do you add on to the premise from the list you gave us last time?
Well, these are all new numbers, these are. Numbers eighty three through ninety nine and the last report was seventy six to eighty two.
Yeah, so basically this is the last report she's given, twenty twenty six, it's a good for last one. Yeah.
Well, no, I sent one thirty. October. Yeah.
Actually, I, I know the last time I looked at one of her reports that had Eric's deck on it.
Yeah.
What's the, what's?
And it had Green Mountain Holdings.
What's the date on the top, report for?
October twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Yeah, this was September.
What are you saying?
Well, she, he was saying it's the same report, it's just.
I see, I was just saying, I've seen this report, we had this conversation about being a busy month and.
He just added new ones after September, hold on, October one year on new.
Yeah, I usually, the stuff that's new for this report, I put in bold.
Oh, I know, you emailed this.
I do do that.
Yeah, that's where, that's where I saw it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I email it to you, I email it to you, the, either on the last day of this month or the, or a couple of days, depending, this one. This one, I actually think I did on the thirty first.
Yeah.
Of October, sometimes I don't do it until the third or fourth or fifth of the month, depending on.
Remember I asked you if this one right here was the. Property, we just.
Yes.
Well, there may be properties that are still on there that we discussed last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'd love to get some of those properties that have been floating around on there off, but, uh, it's.
Take them all.
I feel bad, just forget about them.
They did, you know, October very good.
Yeah.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, fell on the Tuesday, yeah.
Two dwellings.
Yep.
That's good. Helps tax space, where's the dwellings?
Green Mount Holden.
Jack Russell Road, boy, I've got some misspellings in here, don't I? I think it's, um. There's one on Jack Russell. And.
Green Mountain Road.
Green Mountain Road, right, the mobile home, and then there's actually, um, on Simon Hill Road, there's a shed. That replaced a camping cabin there years ago and they finally got a subject system in and converted it to a usable cabin. It's on a standalone lot, even though it goes right next door to the big house there, um, so that went through, that had all the.
I see.
Subject permits and everything, it's, it's sort of like a tiny house, but we don't have any category of that.
That's where you have the help officer come in.
Right.
Verify it, set thinking on it.
Yeah.
And you're working up a. Draft lot of, uh, what you found at Osby Lake campground?
I sent out a report.
You did?
You didn't, you didn't distribute it.
When did you send the report?
Last week. I sent it to you because it was, because it was copied to the other interested parties. I didn't copy it to the three of you, I sent it just to Caitlin.
She can.
So that she could distribute it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a note, I'll see if I can find it on there.
And Rebecca, Rebecca.
Well, I can, you know, when I finish here, if you want, I can pop out back and make three copies of it and drop it off here for you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I should have made it, put a note on a Caitlin for distribution and I did not, um. But it had, uh, it had several parties on it.
Was it within your report email or is it separate email?
It was separate, um, it was sent. It was titled, um. Report to B O S on concerns of violations. That. It's been like campground and it was sent.
This is usually the part where I get to the end and it says, oh crap, I didn't click that button to send it.
No, I had responses to it, so I know I said it. Okay. Tuesday, that's last November, four thirty.
Last November?
Like, they're sorry, last Tuesday, November seven. Yeah.
She has a time machine.
I'll have to look, cause I don't understand that, so.
Yeah, it, it went to you. And Chair of Planning and Mr. Hines and the Health Officer. And then it was C C to the owners and manager of the campground. Let me find the original. That was one that I found because someone had responded to it, no.
After this, you, like you said, if you wouldn't mind just dropping.
Oh, that's cause I'm.
Just as easy, just.
Yeah, it'd be easier for me to forward it from.
Yeah.
We'll just print three copies.
You want the board as well, or she can give you the electronic version of it?
Print three copies.
I'll print three copies, I'll happy to do that, I'll go out and do it, bring it right back.
Yeah.
Couple of questions, have you heard from Mr. Hurtel in reference to a sidewalk on? Nutter Road one fifty three, the proposed. Subdivision.
No, I would, I wouldn't be included in that necessarily if it's a planning board.
No, this is beyond that, so the planning board in the last subdivision authorized a driveway. And so, but he still has to get a driveway permit.
Right.
So he was going to reach out to you and we were gonna. Um, I was gonna try to join either yourself or David or the four of us or whatever.
Yeah, I haven't had an application, um, the.
He's not gonna get an application, cause he's. Yeah.
Is it the ones, is it on Nutter Road or is it the section on one fifty?
No, on Nutter Road.
On Nutter Road, okay, so, cause those are.
Cause I had questions, I had questions and concerns about the site distance, cause it doesn't meet our regulation.
Like there are four or five lots on another road part.
Right, and it's, it's the corner lot that he's trying to subdivide, it's a ten acre lot. And he's trying to subdivide it into two. And he's already been authorized a driveway cut in, it's. I say authorized, he has been given a driveway permit, but he's been given approval by the planning board for driveway here and the one off of one fifty three.
Yeah, my understanding of the way it works is that the, that the planning board approves the site plan. With the suggested driveways to show that there is access, actually access to the property and the planning board will do the site walk and look at that. But for the final location of the driveway, um, we, I approve it.
Exactly.
And, because I don't think the.
And that was.
That certainly looks at the, at the sight lines.
Well, the, the problem was wetlands and steep slopes and that was, they felt like, and it was well versed, well, they talked about it. The gray length, it felt like that was the only appropriate place for a driveway, so I raised the question, I'm like, well, I've walked that and I've measured that many times, I've done. Couple of different sidewalks there and to meet our. Guidelines for a driveway permit, there's no way that it can go there, it's, for me, it's, it's. And I said, it's nothing personal purely from a safety standpoint, somebody coming off of one fifty three, that they're going south of one fifty three. And they go up Nutter Road, it's a long uphill winding corner with a steep bank and, and. Just before you get to the crest of the hill, boom, there's a driveway right there. And safety standpoint. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I have, I have the discretion to vary that. Um, but I generally have only done it if, if the lot's so narrow that there. Isn't necessarily that what the sight lines seem okay, and I, and I've often asked people to clear.
Yeah.
To just kind of underbrush it or anything.
The way it was left, the last time we talked to Mr. Hotel. Is, he was gonna reach out to you, we were gonna try, try to set up an appointment to us about, do a sidewalk, just. The nephew is the one that runs the company, he, he's the one that was here and. I was just curious.
Yeah, I haven't heard, you haven't heard, I know.
And there was a, we, I inquired about a couple of, uh, properties, um. That I would like to see a letter go out, just as a kind of a friendly reminder, hey, you can't have any more than so many vehicles in your yard type thing.
Called the WhatsApp letter.
Yeah.
I converted that for my predecessor.
Shouldn't those go out?
Um, I, I, I was actually working on one when, when Caitlin texted me, so, um, if you wanna, you know, drop me. A note of what the properties are that you're concerned of, I'm happy to, you know, usually I do a drive by to get an idea, so I know what I'm talking about. And.
Just one I had previously brought up for, it's, it's grown by two more vehicles, so it's.
Okay. I probably don't, part of the difficulty is trying to remember that it's helpful for me if, if I get a note or a property card. For the specifics of it, I mean, just for an example, somebody at one point said there were a lot of properties down on Elm Street. That had something going on and when I wrote back and said, can you be more specific, I never heard another word, so it's like. Drive up and down Elm Street looking for.
Well, I didn't write down this particular one because you wrote it down, the mind I borrowed it up the first time.
Oh, okay, alright, well, maybe it's, maybe it's one I'm writing a letter on.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Can be no word. Well, depends which way you're going, Liam.
I know, no, I don't. If I wrote that down, I haven't followed up on that, no, the one I'm doing is still. It's overall, uh, probably not right. Um, so I will go, um, print out copies of that report for you and, uh, is there anything else?
I told you earlier, I was directing a guy, told you, um, the questions.
This afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
He had questioned me, I saw him at the store and he was questioning about crossing a class six road. If he could put it like a driveway across the class six road. So, he wanted to build.
He shouldn't, I didn't hear, the guy that came to me this afternoon, that was.
No, it's probably not him.
No, um.
How would you put it, crossing it?
Well, but not, not, you know, roads and two guys department, I'm.
Yeah, but I told him.
Absolutely.
I says, you're probably gonna have to. Get a variance, I don't know, we're not supposed to allow building on class six, but.
You're talking about going across it?
He wants to make a driveway, he has access on two pieces of land on each side and he wants to cross the class six road.
Well, it's not a driveway unless it originates on a.
I told him, I says, get a hold of, hold of you.
If he, if he's got.
Careful, cause that's not true, it depends on the class six road, because right here, you gave a permit for a driveway on a class six road.
They did, once I.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's one, that's the only chunk of classics road in the town. That has an exclusion board. But if there's a classic road that's internal, what I'm saying is if there's a classic road to in, that's internal, but somebody's two pieces of property. And they wanna join them, then that's. Internal, it doesn't have anything to do with the driveway, cause it's not originating as an access somewhere. It, it's, it's the question of whether the town would allow someone to create essentially a wood road. Across a class six road, and it's not a driveway unless it starts somewhere, so if you're in the middle of a, a chunk of land, you own here. You own a chunk of land over here and you wanna connect the two of them with a driveway across a classic road. That's not, by our definition, that's not a driveway, that's, you know, a wood road or a prairie or something like that, so. Whether, whether someone is allowed to. Go across a class six road with activity on, with two lots that are rebutting is. You know, that's completely new, new information, yeah.
No, there's one parcel of land where the driveway is probably quarter mile long. And.
Wants to extend that.
He wants to extend it across the classics.
Still not within my jurisdiction, because we only regulate the driveways, we only regulate the first. Twelve feet unless we're dealing with steep slopes or wetlands, we regulate the driveway cut to the. Twelve feet unless we're dealing with steep slopes or wetlands, we regulate the driveway cut to the public road. We don't regulate what people are doing on the back part of their.
So the original driveway starts on the class five town road, right?
Yeah, so the rest of it is just. Whatever, whatever you guys would mean, appropriate activity, you know, bumping around on a class six road.
I told him contact you.
Right.
That's called.
And give you, uh.
Oh, kicking it down the road.
Yeah.
Well, I. Someone asked me, they asked me if they could turn their driveway into a private road and name it. And I said, well, as far as I know, you can name your driveway anything you like, um, but if you want to be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think by state statute for nine-one-one purposes, J T is in the, a driveway over a certain length has to have a road name.
I believe that's correct. And whistle.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, I can't remember, I thought my head might have, but it's yours, yours is name though, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah.
But I think that it's not got anything to do with zoning.
No.
It has to do, and I, and I said, and I didn't know that about the, the certain length thing. Um, but if they wanted to, I said, if you wanted to be on town that. That's something else, but it's not. It's not the zoning office, the board select, or the planning board. And as you pointed out, it may be that it's nine-one-one.
Yeah.
That, that's another thing, but it didn't sound like it was a mall road, I mean, he didn't say how old it was, it sounded like it. Gee, I wanna name my road, me, I wanna name my driveway and call it a private road. I suppose for argument's sake, you could say all driveways are private roads.
Yeah, and they are, and I mean, people do that all the time and it's.
Some of them are on that and some of them aren't.
Yeah, we just don't provide the signs, you take like off in Grand Road, this Polaris Way.
Right.
They named that many, many years ago, there was no requirement because it was not.
Right.
Well, that's. Yeah, that was a sudden.
Like all those roads down in the, uh.
Yeah.
Ingram.
Bad example.
Yeah.
Lost Valley.
Yeah. Like, Mark Galloway, he's good. Yeah, there's, there's Galloway.
Gallow, Galloway, yeah, exactly, better example. Or your road.
But his road is.
I didn't name my road.
But it's a driveway.
Yeah.
It's not a town road.
Right.
The part of it. And it's not platt.
Oh, living to the weekend.
Your, your driveway.
It's platt.
Not platt.
Oh, platt, it's not on a platt.
No, not recorded anywhere in the road. Private or otherwise.
But he would meet the, I believe, that standard for a nine-one-one.
Which is how many feet?
I don't remember. I think it's like.
Everybody knows it's a, but nobody knows what it is.
So you said you can't remember stuff, it's not okay for us not to remember?
We're all getting rules.
I would caution you on allowing people to name their driveways and if they hit into a scenario where they're calling nine-one-one and using their name for their driveway. And it's not any nine-one-one.
Right.
They're not gonna get help.
Correct.
We're not gonna be able to find that. Road.
Yep. Okay.
I don't have anything.
Good, good, thank you.
Thanks, coming in.
Yeah, I'll go, uh. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll tap on the door, or actually, I'll put the, stay in the door, yeah.
See. Where are they going to wait?
Sure.
Six, four point six calls for October. Nineteen medical calls, nine fire calls. Five of them, five of the medical calls were at the Green Mountain Treatment Center. Pretty similar month to last month, not, not really much has changed, we're hovering right around that twenty-six, twenty-seven calls a month. We're only at two eighty-nine for the year, which is significantly down from last year, we ended last year with five hundred and fifty calls, so. There's significantly down this year.
Which is good. The two calls on the seventeenth for the outside fire and promise I prove, yes, is that the same place?
Yes, it was. Yeah, illegally burning brush.
We're still getting reimbursed for a high one, right?
We are. Uh, their fire alarms are becoming, they're starting to become a nuisance.
I mean, or always.
Well, it, it comes back and forth. Uh, they've been in an ongoing project for a few years now, trying to start replacing their firearm system for the whole facility, even their offset buildings. Uh, but there's been no, no progress, so. We're getting close to the point of sending them a letter saying we're gonna start charging as per the ordinance, so. Getting close. Every one of the firearms on high watch should belong to them, I know it's a street number, but everyone did.
Like in this state, we were charging.
For metal, we do not charge for.
What's, and I saw him. Not doing well on the driveway, when I was saying earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and, uh, just let me know what that, I looked quickly to my notes, I didn't see it, so let me know what that property was.
I will do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Here's the next one. Um, we've talked a few times now about ambulance bill, um, the potential for us to recoup money on the option if we do transport in our ambulance. They sure as, I met with a billing company a few months ago, uh, they made a presentation to us, they talked a lot about the different things they can do. Um, anytime we transport a patient in our ambulance, they can send a bill, bill the insurance. We have the option, you know, if it's taxpayer. We can take what their insurance pays right off the rest, so they're not paying anything out of pocket, it's just what their insurance pays. Uh, if somebody come out of town, we request our full amount, whatever our billing rates are set at. And, you know, it would go up to the point of collections for somebody who doesn't live in town. Um, in addition to billing for when we use our ambulance, we can also bill for motor vehicle accident response and cleanup. And your vehicle insurance typically pay for that. So there's a little bit of money you can recruit from that. Um, and even building fires, if we have a, a building fire here in town, we can bill for that as well. Um, most homeowners insurance policies actually have a clause in them to allow for paying for fire response. Um, and on a commercial property, that never can get pretty big. The, you know, ten thousand dollars or more. So we have the ability to bill for that stuff as well. Um, we would contract all this through the company if we were to move forward with it. Um, they take care of all the work on the backend, we write our reports, we send them our reports, we really don't even have to send them, they log into the system and look at them themselves. They pull the data they need and they do all the billing on the backend. There are no setup fees, there are no recurring costs to the town. If we send a bill and we receive money back, they take their portion out of what we receive back. So we really don't send them any money per se, we would just receive money and minus their list. Um, I believe it was six percent, if I remember correctly. If you remember the exact number.
I don't.
I didn't bring my correct notebook tonight, so I don't have my notes on it, but I believe it was six percent that they, they take back.
I don't believe it was any higher than that.
Yeah, it, it was. Pretty minimal. Now, to be clear, I'm not expecting to make big money on this, you know, we're talking about, you know, five to ten at the most transports per year. We're not talking big money here. But it was a little bit of revenue.
Good. Go ahead, Liam.
No problems. Um. Tell me, tell me, I think in residence, maybe carry.
So for any of those things. My proposal would be when we send them the bill, we take what their insurance pays and write the rest off and. Me as the fire chief, you as the select board, collectively, we have the authority to say. You know, send that to our second collections, write it on, whatever we wanna do with each individual account. So even if it was somebody come out of town, they presented a hardship and say, hey, I can afford to pay this bill, we have the option to write it down.
My question was the exact same question, I know medical stuff. Whatever the insurance and anything above that, if it's a resident, so. Same question for fire.
And that's a pretty standard practice across the board, you know, any municipal fire department that does, and they don't spend it for it. Would do that for their taxpayers that are already paying for the service, so why are we charging again?
And just, just so I'm clear, so I can. Hear other people say that. Isn't that the way the wording is in the contract of action? We're F M residents, the residents. If they don't have insurance, I mean, anything on above the insurance?
I would need to check that. I'm not comfortable saying without reading that context, I believe there is some wording to that effect in there. Uh, but I, if I remember correctly, the resident would need to request the hardship. So that actually needs to correspond with action to say, I can't afford this bill anyways, this is, yeah, I don't believe it's just an automatic thing.
Mickey has a question, I don't know if you wanna.
So. What happens if they don't have insurance?
Again, that would, that would come back to us, that, you know, the billing company would say there's no insurance to bill, how do you wanna handle it? And again, when it's a taxpayer, we already know what we're gonna.
When it's not.
If it's not a taxpayer, then case by case, you know. And they're using a service that you all as taxpayers are paying for, so it's only right that they have to pay something back, that's, that's my opinion. But hardship cases, obviously, you would have the discretion to say, no, we're, we're major off. Or the whole thing. We have that.
So obviously that would exclude building fires because if it's building, obviously it's.
Well, that's, we can take that portion from the insurance, whatever the insurance allows for the response, we can still pay that. Uh, the document I put in front of you is a sample policy from Arundel, Maine. Um, it seemed to be the most all-inclusive policy that I found on their website, so it's just a draft, it's just something to look at as to how they set it up. So. I mean, ideally, if we move forward with this, I would like to draft something like this for us. Um. Discussion about a warrant article, we weren't really thinking we would need a warrant article necessarily to start the building process, but we would need the warrant article to determine where the money goes once we receive it. So my thought on that would be putting it back into the apparatus fund, the apparatus replacement fund. An area that we're underfunded and. It ultimately is the money.
Appreciate another question.
So nature doesn't require insurance, it's not yet.
Unless you get in an accident.
If it's financed, you have to bear insurance. If it's financed, you have to have insurance.
Right, but if it isn't.
Like a car, you don't need it.
So like you have a lot.
Yeah.
And you get an accident.
If it's your fault, you are required to have insurance. Play that one to me.
Yeah, no, there's no.
Okay, cancel your insurance and go hit somebody and you tell me what the law enforcement.
Basically, it's gonna open court, find it out, they're gonna have probability of what you have insurance behind. That would not be my intent.
We, we.
And part of that percentage we're paying for each bill. You know, they will do collection actions if we ask them to, and that's part of our bill.
Oh.
They would be our representative.
Oh.
If it ever. So we're not necessarily sending our people or our town attorneys, that's what we pay them.
But it's a lot of her, larger percentage than coming out of your.
I, I'm sure there would be a larger chunk once it gets to that point, but again, I, I don't expect that we're gonna be going to that point, you know, I'm pretty sure that we would at that point. Very true. Very true.
J T, one thing you might wanna mention that the company wouldn't take any money unless they received money from the insurance company. Just because they bill, if they get nothing back, it's still not gonna give you the percentage charged. I believe that's what they told.
That is correct.
Yeah, J T mentioned that beginning.
Yeah, so.
Or you can get money back.
Just because we sent the bill out doesn't mean we're gonna have to pay, it's on what we receive.
Which makes it, which behooves them to do the motions, they need to, to assure payment so they can get their proportion.
Correct.
Without us having to do the legwork, us being you guys.
Um, the company is central main cost recovery, they are a name-based company, uh, it's a family-owned kind of deal. Um, they are moving this way, they already have two clients in New Hampshire and they're in the process of signing at least three or four more. So they are moving into New Hampshire, they are set up for all the New Hampshire regulations and that kind of stuff.
Who's their players in New Hampshire, you know?
I believe Hilton Northfield is one, Centrosity Fire is another, they just signed up. Um, and Centrosity's doing the same thing we are, they have an ambulance, they just do the backup. But they now have the ability to be building. Um, Centrosity does a lot more fire inspections than we do. So they've elected to use this company to actually bill out all their fire inspections as well, to take that labor out of. Their office. That's not something that, we don't do enough volume for warrant that, but.
What's the name?
Central Main Costs Recovery.
You thinking about using them there?
Like a little time to, you know, read over this. Oh, and I think we should have a discussion amongst the board.
Absolutely. If you want.
Budget committee.
Yeah, if you wanted to set up a work section or something as well, um, they already came down once, they said they would come back down again.
Yeah.
So if, you know, if we wanted to put them in front of the board and the budget committee and whoever else wanted to hear them speak. We have that option as well.
Next step's gonna be insurance medallions inside of your house. Fire marks, right?
Yeah.
Um, engine two, we talked in the budget meetings about the refurbishment for engine two.
Yeah.
As a method of replacement versus actually buying a new truck. Um, it's added twenty-year mark, which is one, right, we started looking at this stuff, um, and FDA says twenty years, you wanna come back to service. Refurbishing the truck allows you to get additional time out of it without having to actually replace it. Uh, we've reached out, we've requested four quotes, we've gotten two back. The quotes that we're getting are kind of all over the road as far as what they're gonna do to the truck. So before I'm comfortable with a firm number, I need to get their quotes a little bit closer to each other, you know, one's even a lot more of the truck, the other one's very simple on the truck, so.
And they go look at it.
Yes, yes, they both came down and actually put eyes on the truck, all underneath it, all up in the frame, all up in the pump, all that good stuff. Um, we're looking, I'm guessing we're gonna land somewhere around two fifty to two seventy-five. For this refurbishment, um, this involves pulling the body off the truck. Taking the chassis, actually res servicing the frame, if there's any, you know, surface rust, anything like that, they'll sand it all down, repaint it, treat it. Um, around the wheel wells, we do have some corrosion, stuff like that, so that'll all be redone on the body. Um, all the wiring will be redone. The pump will be serviced, I'm sorry, the tank will be serviced but not replaced, there's no need to replace it, it's not leaking. Um, ladder racks and things like that will be changed out for a more modern system. Ladder racks are filled with place already, so they'll put a more modern ladder rack on it. Um. There will be some paint involved.
Brakes, all that stuff they did look at.
They will look at the brakes and stuff like that, um. Again, they won't replace it unless it needs it. At this point, there's no indication that it does. Um. There is a good chance that the entire pump will be replaced. Um, engine two has barely made it to pump testing the last couple of years. So there's a good chance they will need to rebuild the entire pump, so that is figured into these quotes. So, uh, the other thing we'll be doing is taking it from a top mount pump to make it a side mount pump. So if, if you're familiar with engine two, we've got the catwalk where you walk up behind the cap and you stand there to pump it. We would pump from the ground on the driver's.
Safety lines.
It's a safety issue, it's, we actually had two people fall off the truck last year during the winter months trying to pump that truck, it's slippery. The actual set to set down is only this wide and when you're in fire boots. It's easy to miss that stuff, especially when it's covered in ice. So these are all figured into these quotes, um, again, there's a lot of extra stuff that, that one vendor's adding over the other. Some fancy camera system and things like that that we don't necessarily need, so I wanna trim these all down and get them a little bit closer before we present an actual number, but. I'd like to move toward the warrant article on the next ballot.
So I assume that the more expensive quote is way over two fifty.
Uh, the, the highest number we've seen, and this, this number is from one of the ones that we don't have a full quote on, but was above five hundred thousand. So obviously, there's a lot of trimming to be done with a quote like that. So obviously, there's a lot of trimming to be done with a quote like that. Seven to eight hundred thousand dollars. To replace what we have with something in kind.
Last question, Lynn? Gee, can you call from these quotes, what do you want out of them? Make your list, present it back to them, cause they've seen the body, so then it's all on an equal playing field. Okay.
So that's the goal, we get a concrete number in place. Uh, the company that I'm leaning towards the most, they have the most reasonable quote with most of the items that we asked for, is Digi Machine out of Corners, New Hampshire. Um, every other company that we've looked at is out of state and would require us to drive engine two cross-country. To get this done and then go pick it up and drive back. Just having somebody in the state of New Hampshire to do it speaks for itself, and again, the quote is the book for you. Um, Chris, I don't know if you've ever dealt with Digi, but they've been around for a long time, they've done a lot of work up in this area.
Did you get a quote from Bully Dog?
From who?
Bully Dog in Massachusetts?
No, no, we did not reach out to them. Um, Alexa's is another one, which is what they're treating fire apparatuses selling now. Um, that one was reasonable, that was two seventy as it says, so you know, that was a reasonable quote, but again, uh, the truck would need to be driven to Indiana. And that would be done by us, or we pay them to put it on a flatbed and tow it out, but. Having a company in New Hampshire do something like this is gonna save us money, time. Uh, the other factor with this is the payment terms are pretty flexible. So it would be at least a year, if we sign tomorrow and said do this, it would be at least a year before they took the truck. And then the truck will be down for close to a year while they're working on it as well. Uh, their payment terms is. So right now, the cost is one fifty-eight, there's stuff that's not included, that doesn't include the pump and things like that. Their payment terms that they suggested initially were forty thousand, thirty days after the truck is delivered to them. Another forty thousand, sixty days after the truck is delivered, and then seventy-eight, five upon delivery of the truck back to us. So that gives us quite a bit of time there to split up the payments, so we don't have to have the full amount right up front, it'll be payments over time.
This is over a year?
Yeah, yeah, so it, it gives us that time. We probably need, there'd probably be a town meeting in the middle of this bill, that's my guess.
Gee, what kinda warranty would they get for that?
It does stipulate that, actually, this one did not, um, it's, it's typically ten years on manufacturing defects. So if it's something they did that fails, that's ten years. And then each other item is. Yeah, so once we have a full contract, that would all be spelled out in a contract. Another benefit to using a company mobile is when, when and if something does fail. It's going to corners to get fixed, not potentially going back to Illinois to get fixed.
But we don't have a rock bottom fault from them yet.
Not at this point, um, like I said, I'm aiming for two fifty or two seventy-five, that's, that's where I'm thinking we're gonna be at.
Well, I'd like to see a number.
Absolutely.
Not just go, you're guessing.
Right, I'm gonna try and get them in line so that we have multiple quotes from different vendors that we can compare the drafts as well.
So, yeah, we can look forward to it, we have our quotes.
And, and Massachusetts obviously is in New Hampshire, but it's not that far. They, they reframed, you know, the, have you seen the water truck that we have? It actually came from Pennsylvania, it was a tanker truck. We had to reframe that and I went to Bully Dog in Massachusetts. It was literally, we, we were without the truck. Less than thirty days. So, I'll get to the name, I'll get to the contact information, send it over, I'll text it to you.
Yeah, it'll be great, doesn't hurt to get another quote, that's for sure.
JT, can you give that a moment again, forty, forty and what else?
Forty, forty and seventy-eight, five.
Seventy-eight, five hundred?
Yeah, and now granted, that was based on the total cost of one fifty-eight, and again, that doesn't include things like changing up the pump that are gonna need to be done, so. Those numbers will all go off, but that's just an example of how their pay structure would work.
But I have a question, gee, how is that gonna affect your, uh? The effectiveness of you fighting fires with that gone?
Yeah, so we're gonna lose a resource, you know, that, that is our tanker truck, so that's our watering wheels, uh, we're gonna lose that for a period of time. Um, you know, when we get closer to actually looking at doing this, I would speak with our mutual aid partners, they've offered to let us borrow trucks before, so there's potential there. Um, if that doesn't work out, if we're not able to borrow a truck for whatever reason, we would just increase our running parts so that, you know, the next tanker closest to us is getting started automatically right along with us. So that there's no delay.
Do you rely on mutual aid?
Yeah, ultimately.
You just let everybody in the area know that you're down an engine, yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
We did the same thing when we lost engine one.
And actually, the apartment's only supposed to have two, uh, was agreed to, two, they're doing seven, three.
Yeah, biggest problem is this is the water, so it was all the water, yeah.
And that's where you go to the run cards, so that, you know, like now, it's, it's not just, oh, we're down an engine, we're down a tanker. So that puts the alarm up to mutual aid companies that surround us, that they, they don't wanna send a custom with twelve hundred gallons if we're down a. If we're down a tanker, they wanna send their tanker, so you want like, 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 so.
Excellent, so what do you think about consideration since, you know, two engines down the road, once we get this tanker back, get rid of it, engine three?
It's always a discussion, you know, the thing about money pit, the biggest problem that's gonna take away from the town is having an engine on each side. Nothing else will fit in Lord Hill, even the forestry truck won't fit in Lord Hill. So we would only have fire apparatus at station two. And, you know, when you consider our off-duty response, ninety percent of our people are coming from either outside of town or the Lord Hill end of town. So Dana Brandy, for example, they're probably our two biggest off-duty responders, lived two minutes from Lord Hill, now they're driving an additional five minutes down, probably. There's a factor to consider there, it could also affect ISO going down truck. Um, ISO, the Insurance Services Organization, they're the ones that set your homeowners insurance rates and fire protection is a big factor.
Discuss.
It's, it's a discussion, it is a discussion.
Yeah, we'd have to weigh the pros and cons.
One last thing, um, I have an application from Michael Bear, um, he lives here in town on Happy Hill Road. Um, he currently works at the Carroll County Jail. He is not currently certified as a firefighter, but he is a C D L driver, um, and he has operated fire pumps before. Um, looking to be a volunteer, not looking at cover shifts, just off-duty response, mountain, drive the trucks and operate the trucks. And potentially get certified in the coming future. So I don't resonate if you guys wanna look it over, but looking for permission to move forward with it, depending on your background.
Yeah, look it over. You know?
Uh, no, I'm doing a head scratch, I'm assuming Tony Marfo though.
That's what I'm guessing.
We have a. And just side by side, ninety-two call. Fine orders.
So, bold is, uh, basically got in. It'll save a pay a year, at least.
And that's, that's the norm right now, you order a new truck, you're, you're three to four hours.
Yeah. Is he in progress?
No.
I was gonna say, well, you don't ask me, you just handed me something.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if you wanted to see his resume, where he worked and where he has worked.
I trust you, doesn't.
That's like he drove for waste management.
Oh, we can't ask that question.
Not too old.
Younger than me. Got it, yeah, I haven't seen the mission. Corrections officers. We call from entities.
Probably had a background check too. That's it?
That's it.
Anybody getting questions, JT, Dave?
JT is, I know we talked about it, but if there's any way you can break it up into two different ones, I'm gonna take a look at that, if we possibly do that. Gonna try to do everything all at once.
The refurb. Um, the cost structure will get broken down, so payments would be in two separate, but the actual work to the truck has to be done all at once.
Has to be done all at once?
Yeah, yeah, cause they're gonna, they're literally gonna take the body off the truck and everything to do it.
That would only make sense to do it all at once.
That mean that we'd be using the warrant article and have to carry over funds, so we'll just have to be. Worried on the warrant article, how we're gonna handle it, but couldn't come up with trust fund.
Yeah, because it said, uh, photo, like say thirty days, was it?
So, thirty days, how can we get done?
Yeah, then, uh, when we deliver the truck, then. You know, and so it's kinda like.
Yeah, so we just have to carry over, if it's gonna be a year from that. We'll be at the town meeting.
Carry, if it's two fifty, I carry twenty, what is it?
Gee, has anybody ever looked into the possibility of a lot of trailer? It could be brought site when you down like this, I mean, it could be towed either by your vehicle or another engine?
I've never heard of any such thing, but the volume of water, so this truck carries three thousand gallon of water. So, the weight that that would entail on its own, we wouldn't be towing it with anything we have.
All right, I.
Yeah.
Water there, you know?
Yeah, it's a good thought, but I've, I've never heard of any such.
Probably out of Middle East, you might have that.
They do exist, I mean, there are, there are tanker trucks that are tractor trailers, but, yeah, that's. You, you're talking like a temporary service, type more or less.
Yeah, just to fill in all the things.
Yeah, pull behind Indian tank if you would, but it's.
Yeah, but just a red one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can get us some solid numbers.
Once I have concrete stuff, and, uh, as far as the billing, if you wanna set up a work question or whatever.
Yeah, um. How does that work for everybody?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be there.
And we're gonna be here. Next Tuesday. Tuesdays aren't good for you, though, right?
Well, we get the budget meeting Tuesday, you don't wanna go too late. You got a four o'clock and you're scheduled right now, right? Yeah, just for the RFPs, right?
Yeah, five and five thirty, for the RFPs.
Oh, we, we had the six o'clock, but.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
But we have a new meeting.
We all, we were gonna, I s- I was thinking before that, so. Cause we're only, only here for, to open the bids, so.
That's it?
Yeah.
When can nation?
I'll reach out to them tomorrow and find out.
Give us.
Let's dance.
Please silence all phones.
I actually would wait till the.
Yeah, yeah, I think like between days. No, I don't, I don't have Fridays off. I only have Fridays off in the summer time.
So late afternoon, four o'clock would be ideal time for you.
Any, yeah, I mean, perfect ideal time is three thirty on, but, yeah, I can make it anytime, so. I still have, I still have, I appreciate that, but I still have, you know, one hour's very short time that I have to burn before the end of the year, so. You, whatever works.
Burn them down.
Yeah.
No such?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I made a note, so I don't forget to get you that information.
Next up is, uh, capital level. And then. Transfer it to the trust fund. Oh, these are the ones we gotta work on. On what you gave us, they, they have the, uh. Warrant articles. Forty-nine fifteen, buy a truck, equipment, capital reserve, you know, thirty-nine sixteen. Fire department equipment.
And one's the truck and one's the equipment.
Okay, uh.
No, this equipment.
Yeah, yeah, forty-nine sixteen one, uh, we only funded that two thousand. And we got fifty thousand.
That had to do with, uh, taking some of the expendable trust fund. Knowing that we got air packs coming down the road. They're all gonna have to be replaced, so we could put some additional funding in there, but that was just a suggestion of where we could put some of the, uh. Unassigned fund balance.
You said fifty thousand? Fifty thousand, I show was bridges.
No, yeah.
Or it's the last page.
Yeah.
I thought it's not on this sheet, man. No, I'm just saying, right?
Yeah, not on that sheet. My suggestions were the written ones. Are you have, got all the written ones?
Yeah. It's here.
This one?
Yeah, um, again, thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the one I was.
But I'm now confused, like, he's saying my, what are the written ones?
Yeah, that says, yeah, these.
Okay, I'm like, are these all written? I thought he was meant like handwritten. I'm not saying that.
Copy, cause I gave cable copies of the Mickey, so what you put in for the warrant articles, Chris?
Yeah.
I made a talk with the ones that I suggested, and I gave you some suggestions of where we could use some of the unassigned fund balance. And obviously, like Lenny's pointing out, the forty-nine, uh, sixteen E T F, uh, equipment. We may, that may have to be adjusted because we don't know exactly what we're gonna have for a cost coming in on right though. So we may need some additional funds, so we may have to move some suggestions around, these are dismissive suggestions. You'll notice on forty-nine and one, the first one for right field, it's just the two fifty that we got in the tax books, that's all that's listed. You look at forty-nine and one, right field. Only listed, you suggested amount is two fifty.
No, um, oh, Dave, can we, you're over the place here.
Um, start off with forty-nine and one if you want, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we'll jump around.
Yeah. Obviously, that, you found out today, it's gonna be point seven seven miles.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that obviously will be updated. I didn't put any unassigned fund balance suggested in here yet, so we find out what your bid is, we're gonna know that next week.
Yeah.
So, in the tax base, we got the two fifty that we have in Pearl Road right now built into the tax base, so that's why I just used the two fifty figure. So, obviously, I mean, I know you guys will dust that when you get your bids into whatever you have. Now, swear, it will affect our usage of the unassigned fund balance suggestions. That I have in the previous, the next sheets as we go through. No one, any questions on that?
Good with that one.
The one under that, this X out, I talked to Wayne on that, we're not gonna be able to do that, you're not gonna be able to set that revolving fund up.
On a lease detail?
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to set that up because it will require. A whole separate account with a whole separate checking account, which will make a nightmare for Michelle. If the fires payments and reconciliation, so we'll keep it the way we have at the five thousand police detail and the budget actual. So. Yeah, I said, that's that suggestion, but I did get it finally get away. Meet with me and you discuss that, so we're not gonna be doing it. I, my suggestion is we don't do the police revolving fund based on that.
I agree.
Always. Then the one we always have is the operating budget, which we don't know what that number is yet, so. We get done with a couple of more things. And then JT bring a ten repeat, which I'm suggesting that we take that out of the unassigned fund balance.
And that nineteen thousand still good to give?
Could we go with that?
Yeah, yeah, that was forty nine and one.
It's forty nine and one, yeah. Yeah, we have to add in anything else that you get that obviously would be coming up like JT stuff or. Any petition warrant articles will go there.
Right.
Yeah. Now, if you go to forty nine fifteen. We have the truck and equipment. Uh, capital reserve fund, which you always do. That's the one capacity that we take the two thousand going into the.
Right.
Into the uh, fire uh, equipment fund. So that's a common one that we have every year. I think JT was going after that two thousand last I taught you.
The next one we wanna talk about.
Okay.
That's the next one we wanna talk.
Yeah, and the fire truck is the next one. Which is, just a suggestion was because. Gonna depend on how much we need for Ryfield Road, but. Overall, what all my suggestions, we're using about a hundred and eighty four thousand of unassigned fund balance. Which will leave us a total based on the. What we did at the budget committee last meeting of, of almost eight hundred thousand in our unassigned fund balance. Because of what we've been seeing with low amounts at the end of the year. We upped it from last year, we think that's a good number to leave it. We know right now that we had four hundred thousand last December. At the end of the year, and we still had bills to pay. This year, you know, it looks like we're gonna be in that same figure, so we wanna try to increase. From the six hundred to the eight hundred on the signed fund balance, so we can pay some. Especially when we know we have some projects going on down there that are gonna require money, and the school bills are gonna be higher too. As we all know, shocking.
Well, Lane told us last week that we were down around six, six something in technical.
Before you just took out the two, two hundred and something plus, so that was before that. Yep. Yeah, I went back and looked at it and I'm just. But. So what I did on the fire truck fund, when I said right now. Out of the hundred and eighty four, put fifty to fire truck fund, and in the twenty, we normally do from taxation. That's gonna up you. To almost the amount that JT's asking for. Refurb the fire truck in the capital reserve fund.
Okay.
If he gets into two fifty, think that'll put about two sixty into the fund.
Yeah.
We're not gonna run short though, but putting all the fifty thousand in there, I mean, from the end of the year.
No, 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 this is, this is the next year.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we still have all the uh.
I'm looking at the unassigned fund balance at all. So you're taking the money out.
We'll, we'll take that up till.
Till next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, not till April, May.
If it's voted on.
Yeah, maybe not even till after July's, July uh, tax payment.
Right.
You know, we haven't actually funded the other, the uh. ETS or the CRF yet. We have to put the money into them. We're gonna be moving that money soon.
Uh huh.
So we usually wait for the end of the year to fund it.
And realistically.
When your capitals, wait December.
If we make a decision to do the refurb. They don't get the truck for a year. And so it's.
We would be paying that bill until after, funded at the end of.
Twenty twenty five, almost twenty five.
We have to give the two, two, two payments upfront for a certain.
Oh, thirty and sixty, but. But from the, from the.
They be trying to contract, or they take the truck, it's gonna be about a year.
Right.
So that puts us under twenty five probably for the truck even, before they even take the truck. Cuz we're almost to twenty four now, and it's a year before they take the truck. Just food for thought. With that, that, I don't know if that changes.
Well, that might, that might be the place that we decide because Ryfield Road bid comes in next week. That we say, we don't have to put that much in there right now, we can use some of that. And then next year, we can take some more on aside if we need to, or we can move some of that around in here. Just get the option of.
Yeah.
Oh, determines on Ryfield.
Yeah, I mean, how much more is Ryfield gonna be than two fifty?
Or less. Think positive.
I like that thought, but yeah, we already know that's probably not gonna happen.
Yeah, I don't guess it'll happen.
Oh, we, yeah.
Not with base law, and also doing the base too.
Not over, yeah, not over the whole thing though, just very short.
But I would still think we'll get over that figure a little bit anyway. The police group is your standard one you have every year. That's nothing different. Same with your transfer station. We took that from the unassigned fund balance, same last year. Get the beef out that some. Aquatic plants, they did pull some out this year, which was just under two thousand, so we're refunding back into that. And then here's the, the one that I added, that we haven't been putting into, that we need to, we need to be thinking about. Pirates Hundred Street Roads coming up down the road, and we also have granite, if we have some that. We have some money that we can put in, we ought to start putting some into that bridge replacement fund. So it's a suggestion, obviously up to you guys what you wanna do with that, but. That's just a suggestion, but this is also a place you can move money around if we don't wanna put that much into the bridge fund, you can do something else. It's just my suggestion, that's all. Sell them back to bridge. Yeah, no, we're gonna have to eventually, I mean, even if we don't do granite, we're gonna have to do something with Hundred Street. We know that, that's not that far along.
Again, deja vu.
I'd, I'd stick with the fifty thousand.
So, I think everything will depend on Lenny, when, how we come up with Ryfield, where, where you feel comfortable. And then for fire is your expendable trust funds. The bridge maintenance, that's a normal one we have. Right up. Unassigned fund balance, that's what we did last, you know, look at support that again. Municipal buildings. Ten thousand for the expendable trust. We haven't taken any out last, from last year and. And so we do wanna just keep putting it in, cuz we know that we will be ending up having to do some stuff to the buildings. Especially when we're talking about the air conditioning out back here.
Mini splits.
You're talking about the mini splits and all that stuff. So we know we're gonna end up having some things. Never mind, there's a few other things that, that'll be popping up too.
We actually had a question. On the budget versus actual, some time ago, about spread or something got posted, should've come out of that.
Are you talking about, um, I, I don't think you're talking about the municipal buildings, I think you're more talking about.
Yeah.
We did look into that.
Yeah.
I don't know if Michelle was able to switch anything yet, I haven't actually, I don't look.
Right.
Um, but we did look into it, it wasn't a computer. It was, um, the air conditioners that were purchased for.
Thought that might be what it was.
Yeah, so, um.
Well, but that, so that, that's what we had.
Yeah, we did find it.
But that's where we had the discussion that if it was for the air conditions, could the air conditions come out of that fund?
No, it was a previous year.
Oh.
Remember, then we came, remember, so we said we've already done it, we're already going by a year.
Yeah.
So. Nice.
Yeah.
If we can catch it bef- before, close it out the year, we're.
Right, that's.
Yeah.
That was the caveat, that's right.
And then uh, the next one is your computer network fund is. Pretty much. I think we do that every year, so that's no problem, and police safety. Those are both coming from the unassigned fund balance, same as last year. Town hall repair rehab, ten thousand. Chuck hadn't came back and said any more than that, so I assume that's what we're gonna be doing.
Agreed.
For the square town hall.
Capital improvement plan, it was, no, I don't see that.
No, I pulled that off because we've got, we have almost eight thousand dollars, and then we haven't used it the last two years. I didn't put it in the library again, cuz we never expended any of that, we're over five thousand with that, and they wanted that if they had to replace a computer. Well, I think we're sufficient in those funds, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have to be hoping, putting more money into that money.
Okay.
That's my suggestion, but I mean, obviously you guys have.
Not until we use it, use some of it.
Exactly, if we take something out of it, then we should be looking at putting it back in.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then here's where we come to the fire department equipment, where I. Put in, so the basically three big fifty thousand is the fire truck fund. The fire department equipment fund. And the bridges where AMR fifty of the unassigned fund balance. Which would be in one of them, any one of those three, we can. We can juggle around based on whatever we have for Ryfield, whatever makes you feel comfortable. And then the last one obviously is emergency management generator replacement, we're not gonna get rid of that. And I didn't put any in for the uh, loading machines because we have enough for, for what the state said it was gonna cost us. Now we just have to go out and purchase it.
Well, we had it here.
Oh?
Oh, excuse me, nevermind, you know.
Yeah.
How much is it?
I got it.
Cuz I think the, they said the machines are on seven, around the piece.
Yeah, we have more, there's like twelve in there or something like that.
Uh, I thought that was the two.
I didn't get a copy of the, what's in the trust funds.
Huh?
I believe.
You can look in your.
Town report.
Yeah.
I got the latest one in the year.
Yeah, but that's. The town reports only once a year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but like we've, that one, that particular article, we haven't used it yet, so you.
Oh, I understand, but I like the whole. Know that's in there, yeah. I just remember.
Loading machines about eleven thousand bucks.
Yeah, yeah, about seven a piece.
Thought that was. Is it seven thousand a piece?
Yeah.
Well, we can put that back in this one for this year.
Is that a requirement, I would say?
No.
No.
What a water machine? How much?
Or just.
Not a requirement.
Just under eleven, so why?
Makes it a lot quicker, a lot easier.
The only reason why we haven't purchased one yet is because the state couldn't agree on which model to go with, because. The one that everybody was looking at, they were phasing out, so everybody was like trying to get pieces, Rob Peter to pay Paul. Paul.
But this doesn't include what we're putting in this year. There's where the other, like three thousand dollars.
But even if they go to seventy five hundred pieces.
Yeah.
It's fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so then there, that doesn't include what we had this year, that's why I didn't put it in, cuz that would've gave us almost fourteen.
Yeah.
With what we're putting in this year, so that's why I didn't put it in.
But one, we only need one, what you.
I mean, if it's another thousand bucks, I'm sure.
You need to. Need a redundancy in case.
You have to have to.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I was about to say.
Yeah.
But.
It works out before we purchase in other places before.
Everybody else has one except for us.
And that's been working well?
Yes.
Yeah, they voting. State's been three years trial in these different companies to.
Yeah.
See which ones they're gonna approve. They approved two companies.
It's not like it's a brand new thing, it's, it's been existing, we just never had one. A long overdue.
Save cost, but let it go in. For workers.
Remember, right, you said into eleven thought, forget the results.
You wanna add in the uh, you wanna add in for another, another one shot on the voting?
I would, I would.
Okay. That's forty nine sixteen, right?
Yes.
You have a safe side.
Even I'll send you that new one.
Oh, you're one of those conspiracy theorists. Um.
But thank you.
So which one, so which model should we get? Should we get the, the orange model? Or should we get the confused model?
You're taping this?
I'm not biting.
Okay, get those out of the way.
I unfortunately think that your concern is, has been, it's, it's a very good point. Been well versed nationwide, but.
Then we get. Then we get other.
Well, we've had some questionable. Things that, without a water machine too, so nationwide, so.
I'm hoping your next formal select board meeting, you'll be able to put in some of them anyway.
Yeah. And these voting machines, they're not hooked up to anything, they're only right here. It's kinda right here. So we're not sending our results, they're not hooked up to watching someplace else.
So you, you're purchasing something to just save on time?
Kind of.
An accurate, basically?
Not that Congress don't do a good job, but I haven't let through a couple of elections and they came back, exact figures.
Yeah.
Just makes it quicker and easier. You know, have the results within an hour.
It won't be here so late at night.
So they're not hooked up to any?
No.
No. You mean like the internet or something like that? They not log into a computer or anything, no?
No.
They're independent, so.
We allow, you plug it into a wall.
So you're just gonna count the ballots that run through the machine here.
Like you can add something down through the plugs.
And, and you. Don't have anything to compare it to, you're gonna.
Well, the saves the ballots. If there's a button or something, you can uh, hand copy.
Can I add, only cuz I used to deal with them?
Yeah.
So where I previously worked, I dealt with the voting machines, cuz they had seven. Um, and we had spare, obviously, in case one broke. The only components, these are older ones, these aren't the ones that the state are reviewing now, I haven't gotten to see the ones they're doing. Um, but the older ones that I dealt with most of the time, what it is, is it's in a box. The machine's hooked up there, you have the plug, they have a memory card, this memory card is very secure, it's locked up, no one can really touch it. Um. And then what happens with these older ones, like I said, I'm going based off the ones I dealt with for almost eight years. Um, they go ahead and they print a whole sheet. Now, what's required is testing them to make sure it's accurate before any election, it has to be serviced. So many times to make sure nothing will affect.
At a cost.
I don't know, cuz I didn't deal with the bills at that point, but at the service part of it, I would say there's probably. A cost if something had to be purchased, if the scanner had to be purchased. But if there was any certain marks on that ballot, that. The machine was like, eh, like if someone did. If someone did four votes for someone who could be more than three, it would kick it back and tell you, you have an overvote. So they're very, they're very smart, and it does cut down time, but that's how it pretty much works. Just plugged into the wall and slide about it.
Do you need to set up a maintenance fund for warrant article for these things?
You know, we tax like this.
We have to probably see what machines are, and what the state says, what the company says.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
We're jumping too far yet. We only know what machines are.
Right. I think Alan was gonna get prices. I think Alan was gonna get prices from each of the companies.
Let's do kind of service contract.
And I don't know if they have a yearly maintenance plan, or, I know they have people that are on call, so. Station throughout the state. That if, you know, something goes wrong, they can.
If you call them, they gotta be paid, so that's.
Well, I would assume there are warranties of them.
Yeah.
And then they bring K W D.
I just was thinking, if we get in, if we have the information, we have to with the machine. Should we be looking at a fund that would make sure that we had money set aside? In case we had them called out or whatever, over and beyond with the warranty call for, whatever, you know?
I, I agree with you, we have to wait till we get that information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The footer can basically understand what kind of machines are, the warrants, and service, reading sign, and all. So again, a price, uh, just like the truck.
Looking good, Dave? Okay, you wanna open it up to public comment? Please try and be civil.
It's only me again, those may be the next. Zero zero four, cotton slate, oh. Health officers.
Yeah.
Last time they asked Joe, and I did.
Yeah.
Joe, I didn't, this election vote looked at me and said, this is the first time we're hearing about this.
Okay.
So that's. Why I'm asking again, and we're iterating that. Or hopes.
Okay.
I think nobody needs updated and find out, not really what's going on, um. I shouldn't have to really go and track down people. I mean, Joe even said to me, she want me to take care of, you want me to go, it's not my place to tell them.
Okay.
So.
I'll ask you.
And just make people, this is what makes the townsfolk very weary. Because it just, I mean, it's been going on. And ask, and ask, and it's like, it's like a run now, you know, like, you know, my lady was only bringing.
I will mention another one.
Thank you.
We take a vote and have Lawrence change his rank home.
To, to your comment earlier, I was looking for the tiny bubbles.
I don't know if this has been brought up at any meetings that I have with the committee, but. What's going on with the oil tank at the transfer station? Has that been sold?
No, it's still sitting in there.
I thought there was.
Yeah, I don't know if Audrey ever got it up on the website of, uh. NHRA, we took, you took pictures of it, right?
I sent the pictures twice there.
Yeah.
So nobody follows up on things, they, it just goes on.
Kinda looks that way, yeah. Kinda looks, yeah.
They're very negative.
I mean, it's money, it's money that we could use it somewhere.
And the guy from Clean Harvest was gonna check with some of his customers to see if he'd buy it.
Can we find out?
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Maybe we can take that thirty dollars we get for, put it towards that expensive voting machine.
And just a side note, last week, last.
I hope that we get more than that for us, since we put in how much for it.
Vicky, and a side note, last Saturday, Chris and I spent quite a few hours loading up with my tractor, the dumpster where all the. Appliances. Free.
And.
I'm just saying, I mean, we, we're.
We don't have them coming to get it now?
No, that's not, no, that's not what you said.
I didn't say that.
I'm sorry.
So, once upon, man, so once upon a time, I brought in a concern that I had as a citizen. Because I witnessed one of our transfer station attendants in the middle of the winter, wrestling an appliance from the. Uh, impound yard, so they call it, into a container. Because they bring the container once we have an adequate a number, or it's full, which in this case it was full, I'm thinking to put in their container in there. So. I, I felt like if Primax ever found out that our people were doing that. They, you know, we could be in serious trouble, and then you come find out that we did have injuries because of that activity, so. We took it upon ourselves, Leo brought his tractor, and we loaded the trailer. The two of us, the.
Container.
With, and Mike, and Mark.
So what was done before then?
Manually.
Manually with a dolly.
Okay.
They take a doll, they do, a two man, a, a two wheel car.
It's always, I, I didn't think it's always been done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And in the winter time, when, because, you know, for a couple of years now, the winter road contractor wasn't utilized in the sand pile of the transfer station. So there was, there was minimal filing activity down there, cause, you know, cause he just used the shed over here. So, you know, they had to snowball a path into the impound yard, and then wheel this, and I'm like. What's he doing? Uh, no, our insurance company would, and then, yeah, they have had injuries, so. It's like, no, we're not gonna, hey, guys, thank you very much, thanks, but no thanks, we're not gonna do that anymore, so we coordinated and. Went down there and took care of it, and cleaned out the, the old shed, and. I'm not.
So is it? Clean harvest that still comes and.
No, we just made that point, basically, yeah, we're trying to, you know, yeah, we didn't get to the oil tank. I know it was sent to Audrey, gave it to Minister here, and you probably, I don't know what happened, but Caitlin will probably look into it.
Who comes and picks up the whites?
It's scheduled to N R, R A.
Oh, that's right, N R R A.
Like usually once a year.
And they take it, and then the. Um. Nobody tell me, why didn't get through this myself? The junk company off Route forty-one.
North Country.
North Country Recycling. Comes and gets the trailer, but it was a good. We don't have to, they do, the transfer station attendants, but in the interest of saving them getting hurt, we volunteered our time on this, put in, we did it.
Container.
It's a container, yeah. It's a roll-off container.
Forty footer?
Just like the CDX, the, the waste goes in. And, you know, per, that day, or for the conversation to continue with that, um, God bless you. Did you sneeze?
No, I coughed.
Um.
You can't afford a distraction.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um. So. Any N R R A or whatever, how was that acronym is, they're a middleman for. The metal, so that further goes along with the conversation I was having at the last meeting, about us having a work session and discuss. The operations, you know, how do we do things in billing, or not billing, but. Um. Disposal of white goods and metals and things of that nature, and our charging, and what we get charged, and so forth, so we, we have to. Do that collectively. Because we call N R A, and they call the metal company that, they're involved, or no, Pembroke. Right? Epsom, Epsom, Epsom.
Epsom.
And they call a company that's ten minutes up the road to come get our metal, when it's ready. That kinda confusion with me. And then I think it did Leo too.
Like, direct.
Like, where, where, yeah, where's the middleman there? Cause like the town of Ospey, they use Ricker's, Ricker brings a container, they set it, we put a metal in it, call them, say it's full. And. Then there's what the exact arrangement is financial wise from that, I'm not, I won't speak to for sure. You know, cause I don't wanna talk out of turn, but. There's no. And no, no offense to N R R A, but. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, right?
We're gonna try to save.
In our, in double R A, that's like a co-op, once you join up, you have to go through them, cause they negotiate, uh. All these scrap companies to, for tires, electronics, and. Um.
But they get, they get their cut.
Yeah, there's all sorts of heavy.
So, it's not like waste management, when the. Mark needs the demos empty, he can call Waste Management. Now, now it's gonna go through the office to, and I'm. All ready, and. They do the calling. And like Chris says, the guy comes right through Route forty-one, so. It's a way of setting up.
So back to your old tank, well, I don't think you ever looked into it, right?
This is my first time ever hearing about it, so.
So I still have pictures, send me out. And I told her, ask her to. Put it out for bids. Is it okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's the one way around it, but.
No.
Get a hold of that guy from Clean Harvest to see if he's checked with any. Any of the people that he deals with. Cause he, you sent him the pictures too, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think this.
Or maybe I had, or we sent him, I don't know, like somebody sent him.
No, she said it's.
I know she.
At one time when I interviewed, she said someone. Thought someone is interested in him, and then I never heard again, and.
Yeah.
I seem to remember the shady thing.
Yeah, I do too.
After that, bro.
Um, anybody got anything else, anyone bring up?
I just wanted to remind you about, um, OCC.
Yes.
Or, I don't know if you're bringing it up now, or.
Well, whenever you said I could. Brian, what he said I could. Oh, well, no, no, I was.
Uh, we don't have any need for non-public rights. You want major voting?
Oh, we, we. We, we got passed Board of Selectment Report, so.
Oh.
So I'm, I'm just gonna bring that up, well, I already told David anyway, so.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying to remind me of.
Yeah, but then he showed up and I remembered to put out your reminder, and we discussed that. Um. So the, the additional thing was, so. The federal government, did you get that part in the email, the federal government, when they. Give allowance for the Meals on Wheels. That is three years ago, the number's based on three years ago. So it was the start of the pandemic, when they weren't going into people's houses, so the numbers. By the numbers that they had dropped dramatically. But realistically, now, on our need and moving forward, the numbers are up, so let's just say that. Um, the, the monthly average is two hundred and fifty meals. They only afforded, going on numbers from three years ago, this, the federal government for their reimbursement for those meals. They only reimbursed a hundred and eighty to two hundred. So there's the shortage, and there's the drastic two-thirds of an increase over next year. So whatever they, so that additional fifty meals, whatever, cause it's always been short, they've never given, federal government's never. Given the full. Weight, so normally, let's say it's two fifty, they'll give two thirty, so they have to come up with the, the other twenty. They do that through fundraising, well, as everybody around us is, is getting. Is, there's less employees, and, um, and you can't get any help, you can't get any fundraises. Limited, because you're coming off of COVID and, and things like that, and. The end result was, I strongly advise that because it's sticker shop. For all these communities, not just Fingham, I'm sure, that they're requesting this money from, is they put something. Well, she emailed you.
She gave us all the details.
Yeah. And is also to put it in writing and. Send it out to the town, so with an explanation.
It's, it's a package, but I just sent out additional information of why they're going up so high.
Yeah.
And I mean, just like any other nonprofit, like I talked to Steve tonight, and. Any other nonprofit gives the same, same spiel about funding. Everyone, it's just a matter of, we'll negotiate it, you know, in our town, what we can afford and what we can't afford, and. I think that maybe what the select board ought to be doing though is, looking at changing, putting a letter out to. Ospey concerned citizens Meals on Wheels, and start the monthly billing to our town. And that we go back, like all our other nonprofits, every other non, nine nonprofits. When we approve the amount. Sometime like July, you send them their check, or you approve them out for the town. We had a set approved amount for them for the town, but because they were billing, we didn't know it. Our office didn't know it, they seen the bill, they paid it, that's why we're over. We're over the town approved amount for that nonprofit. It should be no different for them than in the other nine nonprofits. This is the amount the town approved, here's your amount. So my suggestion to you is, Glenn, you got your email. The boy could talk, obviously, talking over, my, my suggestion is that we contact Misty and. Ask her to stock the monthly billing, and that she will be receiving one check. After the town meeting, what's for what's approved, if she requests it. I mean, otherwise, we'll end up with the same thing we've been with monthly bills and. Our office wouldn't know. Unless we told them to watch out for that one nonprofit.
Yeah. Like I said in the past, they've always built each month, so many meals, but we never went over the.
For ten years, we've never gone over.
Yeah, we've never gone over.
Well, I mean, right now, on forty-four fifteen, the health agencies in the land, that's all your. You know, chil, children's are limited, all that stuff, but then, uh, Meals on Wheels fall in forty-four, four, five. I know, but they fall in a different category, I mean, in the budget.
Well, it, it's just a line item number that, but they're still, uh, uh, nonprofit category. It's a different line item.
Well, let me ask this, should we put that category in with forty-four fifteen?
The state can sign the category numbers.
Meals on Wheels.
Meals on Wheels has the category number for that.
Yeah. Why would this?
I don't know why it has a separate.
Where are all the other agencies, they're all not assigned?
You see what the number is, they did, they were right. Forty-three. What's the number that we defined?
Forty-four.
Four, 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 five, point two.
Yeah, point two, yeah.
With the general assistance.
Yeah.
After, after general assistance.
Yeah. Let me take a look at the MS five thirty-five.
Yeah, take a look and see.
Double check, see if maybe, maybe, maybe they don't have it broke up, we always had it broke up in a.
Right.
You know, I see what you're talking about, maybe they, maybe that's where the difference is. Put it back into the forty-four fifteen.
Correct, that's what I'm looking at.
Yep.
Yeah, it's kind of a weird. Very weird number, forty-four, forty-five, point two.
Yeah, I mean, it's always been in that, and I have a funny feeling, but I take a look at the. Five thirty-five and the seven thirty is probably.
Well, I mean, it's all assistance, so put it all.
But, either way, I mean, it's still a nonprofit. It's not like our welfare department, where we have to fund that.
Oh, I understand, I'm just looking more from the standpoint of in a year, month check. Whereas if the twelve months.
Yeah.
That monthly check is, you know, every other agency, we come in, like, one check only.
And Misty responded, Misty responded.
Yeah.
She said she don't know why it's monthly, been like that for the three years she's been here. She didn't seem opposed to going to a one check. You know, even.
Okay.
Cause it just goes, we give them one check, it just goes on their account, and they.
Instead of filling us monthly. Yeah. But I mean, that's something we, you'd have to, I mean, if you're agreeable, you'd have to contact her and let her know that that's what you're gonna do. You won't accept the monthly bills, you'll give her the one after the town meeting. The one payment.
So we can have that discussion when we do the health agency.
Yep, we can do that then.
Yeah.
And then you also check in and see if we can move that category back.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Is that next Tuesday? Is that by the next Tuesdays?
No. Okay. Twelve five, Chris?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So far, I have two nonprofits so far, definitely give a presentation, I expect two more. Oh, if you complete that, so listen to email me what.
County.
County has. I know she was gonna do that in September, I forgot to remind you, Chris, you could.
Hey, Sharon.
See you on Zoom.
No.
Anybody on Zoom?
I, yes, there are three. We have David, Rich, and Cory. We have David, Rich, and Cory.
They don't have anything, right?
You know, when I said I were, I'm burning, yeah, saying I'm like this.
Making myself notes, Steve, so I don't forget.
There you go. Only you get the more notes you'll find.
Uh, just because we did get an email, um. The, there are a few more roads that still need to be graded, obviously, they got cold, it rained, so hopefully as it warms up later on this week, Thursday and Friday, those things will get addressed. And there's some cold patching that's going on, so, um, I do know that there was concerns about. Full pound road, and that is on the list to be, um, touched up before it sets up for the winter, so.
Yeah, you'll be good. And just touching on that, um, this driveway, they said they're gonna get it Thursday.
Okay.
Kevin had something to do. You know, do it Thursday. Should have, should have told the five little news here.
Don't need a warrant, Eric. Older or, uh.
We'll work on that maybe next year.
Probably rock a bomb.
No, you don't have a problem.
Won't be any bomb.
Don't say, is there a boulder coming?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Probably pretty good size. What, did anybody show up to look at that?
Nobody showed up.
Never get the vehicles, vehicles now.
But it's still available.
For bids.
We've got a kid that needs a car.
Do, I, I do, but here it is.
Thank you, Marshall, Lee, J R.
Second.
Move the second in all favor.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.